March 12th work session of the McMinnville City Council. It is 6:00 PM and I would like to call the work session to order and ask Susan Muir, our Director of Parks and Recreation, to start the presentation on the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan update.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you. I'm not going to waste any time before I turn it over to our consultant team on this, who will update you about what we've done since we were last here and give you some context of the overall process that we're in. So John Phinis from MIG, you know as the project lead on the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan update, and then Michaela Jellicoe is the SDC team member for the consultant team. So I'm going to turn it over to John.
All right. Good evening, everyone, council members. Thank you for having me. I'm John Phinis. I'm a planner and principal with MIG. We're consulting from helping City of McMinnville with this project. So good to see you all again. Tonight, we're going to focus on system development charges for parks. This is a continuation of a conversation that we've been having, you've been having updates on since the last time we met back in end of last year in November. We had a work session to talk about a draft methodology, which Michaela is going to talk about a little bit more tonight. So just a couple of reminders about kind of where we are and how this fits into the overall Parks Recreation Open Space Plan. The system development charges are an important funding component of the plan. They're obviously very important to help growth pay for its fair share of improvements to the Parks and Recreation system. And so it is one piece of the funding tools that are available to the city, and it's an important one, which is obviously why we're working with you all to develop the updated methodology for the plan. So again, this is just a portion of the overall project. In the staff report tonight, you'll see a little bit more of a summary of where we are with the overall park system plan. We have a draft that we'll be presenting. We'll have a meeting with the DEIAC next week to present that plan, and then we'll be coming back to council for another work session next month to dive into the draft plan itself. So that will be coming up next. Tonight really is a focus on system development charges. Just quickly on kind of what's changed since last November to now, I think the presentation tonight is a few different things. Importantly, though, you had asked us for a few different things to talk about for this next, this next meeting tonight. And so we have those detailed out in the staff report, and I'll just quickly go over those and I'll turn it over to Michaela to get into the presentation portion. But just to go through the list of items we're going to talk about tonight with some updates that you asked us to look into. The first is there were some questions around parkland level of service, how that's calculated into the methodology, where those numbers come from. So we'll be talking about that tonight, a refresher of where those numbers come from and how that's to used in the methodology. We were asked to look at an additional category of residential dwellings. In this case, we looked at a larger residential dwelling at 4,000 square feet or larger. We included that in the methodology. We showed you last time a comparison, City of McMinnville with comparable park and recreation systems, what their SDCs are for parks, just to give us a feel for where things stand. We talked about some changes to that, some updates we'll present tonight. And then phasing with SDCs, that was an important topic last time. So we'll talk about how phasing might work with McMinnville's updated SDCs. And then lastly, there was a question around percentage of the overall SDC charge that the city can consider to assess on developers, which we'll discuss as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Michaela to talk more about responses to these questions as well as the updated methodology. But tonight, of course, is a work session, so we're here to take more of your questions and happy to discuss more as we refine the methodology. So with that, Michaela, I will turn it over to you.
Thanks, John. Good evening. I'm Michaela Jellicoe. I'm a senior economist with Community Attributes, and as John and Susan have introduced, I'm here to talk to you about system development charges for parks. So I'm going to share my screen. All right. So as John mentioned, I'm going to quickly show you the updated park SDC. There have been a couple of changes since the last time that you saw this. And then I'll touch on the level of service approach, phased implementation, and then I have some notes on exemptions and updates to your SDCs, and then closing out with next steps and plenty of time for any questions that you might have. So this is the updated SDC schedule from the methodology. The key changes in this are firstly, we updated the fund balance. So the numbers actually came down a little bit because you have, at the end of fiscal year 2023, you have quite a bit in your park development fund, which we've accounted for in the methodology. And then secondly, we updated the tiering structure to add several new categories on the upper end of the, of the square footage tiers. So before, it stopped at 2,000 or more square feet. So based on your feedback last time, we added a tier for 3,000 to 4,000 square feet and 4,000 or more square feet. And we couldn't go any more higher than that, add any tiers higher than that due to the data that it's sourced from. So those are the key changes since the last time you saw this. So you'll see that the cost per person is about $4,741, which converts to SDC rates or per unit rates ranging from $5,803 to $14,959, depending on the tier of home and based on the size of the home. And then the nonresidential fees range between 75 cents per square foot for warehousing type uses up to $3.33 per square foot for retail, restaurant, and hospitality type uses on the nonresidential side. Last time, there was some discussion around what do these SDCs mean for development? So I thought I'd provide sort of an example calculation at this, at this full rate. So if you were to build 15 single-family homes ranging between 2,000 to 2,999 square feet per unit, the current SDC rate per unit is $2,617. So your total SD, park SDCs would be 39,255. And based on our per persons per unit estimates, that comes out to around $935 per person. At the new SDCs, these units would have a rate of 13,272 per unit, and the total SDCs would be around $199,000. And, and the estimated cost per person is 4,741 because that's how we calculate these fees. So you'll see that that's the same number that we showed in the previous table. And then for comparison purposes, if you were to build 15 multifamily units between 500 and 999 square feet per unit, that would be the same you would pay, they would have the same SDC, total SDCs currently, 39,255. And the estimated cost per person is actually higher simply because you have the same type of, you know, that you have the same rate no matter what type of unit you're building currently. But typically, smaller units have fewer people. So we would see that the, the cost per person would actually be a little bit higher compared to single-family homes. With the new structure, these smaller units would have a smaller per unit cost, 9,181. Total SDCs would be lower compared to single-family homes, and they still have the same cost per person between the two. So that's just to help illustrate how the proportionality of this tiering structure works. So smaller units that house fewer people typically pay less rate, less per unit. We also updated the comparisons. This has been updated with a few new cities, and we removed the, based on feedback last time, we removed the Shaillam Parks and Recreation District. So this is now, the cities here that you see now are cities that are very close in size to McMinnville across Oregon. And you can see that single-family rates are, you know, range from $16,565 in Lake Oswego down to $1,000 in 1017 in Grants Pass. So McMinnville currently is, with your inflation adjustments, at $3,082. So you're pretty close to the bottom. And with the updated rates, you would have tiered rates sort of spread across that range of cost per unit for single-family dwelling units in these comparison cities. And even at the highest, the largest units, you're still not the highest rate among these comparison cities for single-family uses. Multifamily range between, so the, the largest, 4,000 square feet, so if you had a 4,000 square foot multifamily unit, the rate here would be the highest. And currently, you're definitely still on the low end of your comparison cities. And with the tiered structure, your comparisons sort of range throughout the, the comparison cities, just like with multifamily units. And you'll see that smaller units, which tend to typically be more, like more multifamily, for example, tend to be in the middle of these comparison cities. On the industrial and manufacturing rates, so on the nonresidential side, I've put together sort of a sample comparison. This is the same that you saw last time. I've excluded comparison cities that don't charge park SDCs to nonresidential development. So not every comparison city has a nonresidential fee. So for a 17,000 square foot industrial space, your full cost recovery rate in the SDC methodology would be the highest of the comparison cities that have adopted a nonresidential fee. And all of these cities have different approaches that they have adopted to do this. Grants Pass, for example, charges based on parking spaces. Most cities use a similar approach that we used in this calculation, looking at employment density, so the number of employees per square foot for the type of use. Warehousing, for 25,000 square feet of warehousing space, the fee would be around $18,800, which is the highest of the comparison cities with adopted nonresidential rates again. And I think that you'll see that the nonresidential rates are the highest among the comparison cities. So retail would be around 13,300 for 4,000 square feet of retail space. And then lastly, office would, for about 17,000 square feet of office space, it would be 48,000. And I think, I apologize, I think that in my effort to reduce the density of these slides, I actually copied the wrong thing here. So I think it might actually be more square feet of office. I'll have to look at an older version to correct that, if you would like to know. All right. And then on the revenue side, historically, you've collected around $373,000 annually in park SDC revenues. So totaling between 2015 and 2022 about $3 million. Based on the maximum allowable rates, forecasted revenues between 2023 and 2041 are 71.1 million or about 3.7 million per year. And of course, this is based on your population forecast, which, and employment forecast, which we use in the, in the methodology. But of course, the actual development trends are going to dictate how much revenue you actually receive per year. All right. You asked previously about...
You know, before we go on, I'm sorry, but before we go on, let's just check in for questions about the SDC methodology so far. Counselor Peralta, anything?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Michaela, thanks for the presentation so far. I appreciate the data. I just wanted to confirm that the rates that we were looking at were the, the maximum allowable rates that were under consideration? Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Menke, anything?
No.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Payne?
My only question is maybe more for McMinnville staff, and that's, does it make sense to charge based on square footage versus units or the other way around? Because I feel like we're getting kind of the, like the per person piece plus the square footage. And even though the number of the population, so to speak, that that dwelling would house is not entirely accurate, the numbers are really close once you get over 3,000 square feet. I feel like the distance between 3,000 and 4,000 is relatively insignificant. So I guess that may be more along the lines for staff. And then is there benefit to this methodology versus a flat fee for one unit and then multifamily units?
I can chime in a little bit, and then of course, I'll defer to staff. But I'm going to go back a couple of slides just so we can see the rate structure. So this is charging per dwelling unit just based on the size of the unit. And we typically find that, you know, from a best practices perspective, this provides a more proportional rate to the impact of the type of development. So the flat fee per unit is going to charge more proportionately to smaller units compared to larger units. So essentially, smaller units end up subsidizing the impacts of larger units when you charge a flat fee. The downside of having more tiers like this is it, it does create administrative complexity to actually administer the program. A lot of cities do charge a rate, a single-family rate versus a multifamily rate, which is slightly more proportionate than a flat, like a single rate like you have right now. But you do see that, like, very small units do have quite a few fewer people than very large units. And yes, it is true that as you get into those larger spaces, you see larger homes, you see a drop off in the, you know, increases in the number of people per unit. There's not as much of a difference between a 3,000 square foot home versus a 4,000 square foot home. So it's sort of a trade-off. And then the trade-off for staff, whether you want to have that more, you know, more proportionate approach versus the administrative complexity that it creates.
Thanks, Michaela. I would just add that the way we structured the residential was in response to trying to get some equity component and some sort of scalable fee, as Michaela just described. So we, we felt like we got that direction for looking at smaller houses that would have a lower amount and then breaking it up in between. I'm not sure we answered your question.
Mostly, yes. I would go back, I mean, my point about the 3,000-plus remains the same. I guess I don't feel like 500 square feet doesn't hold more than one person. Most apartments are bigger than that. So from an equitable standpoint, I'm not terribly supportive of the 5,800 at, at that level. And then jumping right up to $10,000 almost for 500 to 900. It just, it, I guess it feels like maybe there's, now we have too many tiers, which I realize was a direction from council based on last meeting. But I think overall, you did answer the question. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know Counselor Menke and then Counselor Peralta, I want to do a quick add-on to this, which is a, so I have kind of a similar concern, and I hear you're aiming at a more equitable approach. And my similar concern is that this, in this current structure, looks like it would disincentivize eight 500 square foot apartments in a multifamily, which is what I believe Counselor Payne is aiming at, versus one 4,000 square foot unit that could be occupied by 3.16 people or could be occupied by one or two, or could be occupied by a lot more than that. But that when it's an individual unit, a higher density of individual units, it seems, whether this is accurate or not, but it seems as though a more dense, it seems as though the multifamily that has more dense, smaller units providing more should scale in a way that it's not subsidizing the larger single-family. And then my other concern, if this was on the industrial or side of it, is that if we do go forward, and I don't know what the right methodology would be, but if we do go forward with employee density as the driver for SDCs, are we not risking disincentivizing the very type of business we're trying to attract and actually incentivizing large warehouses, which we, from a community standpoint, we don't want to attract, that we want to attract high-density, you know, manufacturers or, you know, employers that can, that can deliver us some, some high density? So maybe you could approach those two things a bit just from an equitable standpoint. And then, I've got the two of you, and also Counselor Chenworth and Council President, I know you're on Zoom, and I'm trying to monitor the Zoom, too, but if you can help me out, if you have a question and you can put your hand up, that'll help me, it'll pop you to the top of my screen. Thanks.
Maybe Michaela and I can kind of tag-team the answer on this one. I think what I would say is that the, when we talk about the impacts, what, what, the impacts to development don't necessarily impact the methodology. So the methodology is based on the development proposal in the Parks Plan. That's how the, the overall price of the system is, that's how we come up with it. We do the plan, we have the projects, we find out how much it costs. Smart people like MIG figures out which percentage of each project can be funded by system development charges, bonds, grants, and other things, and they put this together, and that's the target for these. You can subsidize. So this is, this is laying the baseline. What you can do is say, you know what, we really want to incentivize this type of development. So the way, one of the ways you can do that is to reduce or adjust fees. You've heard me say this before, if you reduce or adjust the fees, that will reduce and adjust the park improvements. And so I know other cities will often have like a grant application or a once a year where the city puts aside $200,000 to help with affordable housing SDCs or to help incentivize those kinds of things. So tonight, you're really looking at the methodology and the structure, and those other dials can be adjusted. My guess is that will also be a part of a budget conversation, if that's sort of the route that you all want to go. But what we're looking at here is the, sort of the math to get to the numbers, and then that funds the plan. We can adjust both of those things, scale them, or you can offer subsidies to kind of backfill it.
Okay, great. Counselor Menke, thank you.
Thank you for a great presentation, very interesting so far. Could you clarify for me, how long has it been since we actually, I mean, I know we do an incrementally increase each year for cost of living and stuff like that, but how long has it been since we actually really raised the SDCs or looked at it seriously?
I think 1999 or 2000.
That's kind of what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to make a point that we've been at the bottom of the scale for a very long time, people.
Thank you. Counselor Peralta?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Following up on the mayor's questions about increasing equity on the lower end of this, my recollection from the previous conversation was that although this may appear to have a harder impact on the lower, the smaller units, it actually was much more equitable than the previous system in terms of how it treated those units. Because when you treat them all the same, then instead of comparing a 1.2 unit density, you're, you're essentially, for, for every unit, you're basically treating them the same as, as any other residential category, isn't that right? Any other residential property? So, so essentially, you're reducing the, the per unit cost on the lower end, and the more granular this is, the more equitable it is relative to what the alternative is at the lowest end. Isn't that sort of the intent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Did you have anything additional?
No, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Council President, and then Counselor Chenworth after that.
Yeah, Susan's answer clarified some of my question. I was more interested in how our MACs got so far ahead of pretty much everybody else with exception of maybe Twalton, and how these other entities are funding their park systems if they have such low SDCs.
Probably a little bit like we were, and like we have been, which is trying to prioritize the plans, not necessarily the, the overall master plan not actually being implemented because of the lower funding level coming in. And there's just so many different factors related to Parks Plan. John can probably speak to this a little bit more, but there are so many different community values about that subsidies, you know, age of the SDC methodology, age of the plan, all of that can factor into those things. John, do you have any, any better lay of the land across the state?
Yeah, well, I think that's a pretty good summary. Susan, I was going to mention, you know, the question about other cities and, you know, if they're, if they have these lower SDC rates, how do they make up for that difference? And I, I think one solution is bond funding, and Twalton in particular, you mentioned, Twalton just passed a Parks Bond, I think, last year to fund exactly what the city's doing right now with the, the City of Twalton's updated Park System Plan. So it took a lot of, you know, outside or voter-approved funding to make that happen. So that's, I think, a big one that a lot of, lot of cities come to grapple with, especially when they have, you know, a newer plan with projects that they realize they have to take on.
Thank you. Counselor Chenworth?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll be while I lower my hand. So my first question, most of my questions have been answered. My first question, there was a, I think somebody made a comment about maybe this, further discussions on amounts would be handled during the budget process. But my understanding is this, these dollars coming from this can't be used for maintenance. This is only used for new parks and new usage need. Am I missing something there?
No, you're, you're correct, and I'm sorry I mentioned the budget. That probably was a distraction. But what I meant by concerning the budget is if the council decided to subsidize certain types of development through reducing SDCs, you could consider how would the city backfill that so that we can still maintain the... so that we can still maintain the goals in the PROS plan update. That would be finding money in a different source, which is why I mentioned the budget.
Understood. The next question, I don't know if Tom or Heather's there. I will admit to having sticker shock. The idea of a thousand percent increase on our parks SDCs is a bit disconcerting for me. Is, and so my next question is for Tom, and for, or for Heather, if either of them are there. What is our current total SDCs that we're charging on a single-family dwelling?
Our community development director is on Zoom as well.
Yeah, so councillor Chenworth, I can't give you the exact number, but what I generally tell developers, it's approximately 10,500 per housing unit when you include transportation, wastewater, and parks SDCs. The wastewater SDC is based on fixture counts, and so that fluctuates a little bit.
Okay. And so, and after this, that will go up, looks like about $2,000 more per unit, if I'm reading this right?
For the smaller units, correct?
For the less than 500-square-foot units, if I'm seeing that correctly, yes.
Okay. I'm always perplexed at these conversations because on the one end, we're always concerned about the increase in rising costs for our people that are trying to buy housing in our community. And then on the other end, we're increasing the cost to buy housing in our community. And so, you know, I always, I'm watchful of that and concerned of that because we're gentrifying, and it's becoming very, very difficult for people to afford housing in McMinnville. So I think we need to be cognizant of that. I understand we need to be looking for better ways to take care of our parks. And so I don't oppose some of them. The methodology, I think, in and of itself is probably fine. But I don't think going for maximum is a smart idea at this time. And so I'm just going to throw that plug. And now I know that the parks director said that that would be a discussion for a later date. But just to peg that down, I'm not in favor of that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Councillor Gary?
Thank you, just chiming in from my perspective as a builder in this community and other communities. And so I think one thing missing from this calculation soup that was sort of just referenced in terms of in McMinnville, but outside of McMinnville, that answer for when, what to expect when you're building a single-family home. As Heather said, you plan about 10,500 in town, all-in, four SDCs. That number in other communities, while we're only looking at other communities' SDCs for parks, that number is much higher across the board for everything, for all of those numbers. So in the context only of shooting up the ladder on parks SDCs when taken full freight, you know, it's going to be much different than just looking at the parks SDCs. I also think that what I heard director Muir say, really, I thought was important to consider, and I think is a way we can go forward, is nail the methodology and the tables, and come to terms and agree with that, then work on the discount methodology, work on the equity and pushing that stuff down to incentivize those developments. Yes, this table we agreed to says, if you want to build a house square foot 500 and less, it's this, except we've chosen to discount that at, you know, 50% or whatever. And we've created a revenue model to still pay for the total dollars we need to, to put that parks plan in place. But this is how we're going to get there. And we're going to hope we get there by doing this equitable style of development with that plan as well. I would also just say, when I look at the SDC of MACS SDC being up there, I see that also meaning we're in, you know, X amount of years going to have a top-tier park system that we can be proud about, that's on par with those communities. And so it's not just that SDC is going to be high. It's that our parks system will be that high, which is important to me.
Okay, thank you. And I see we have two more comments on Zoom. And then I do just want to remind all of us that we're over halfway through our work session. But Michaela is only one-quarter of the way through her presentation. So I'm going to go to, again, council president, and then councillor Chenworth. And then we're going to go back to Michaela at that point. Thank you, council president.
Thank you, mayor. I'll make this short. I was just looking back at slides six, seven, and eight, and nine, and how we're showing up in those slides. And to build on councillor Chenworth and councillor Gary's points of, you know, for me personally, it would really help to understand the holistic view of where we are as total SDCs per dwelling unit. And I would agree with councillor Gary that it's important that we land on some methodology. I just, I don't know if I can land on that methodology personally until I understand kind of how far north of average we're going to be if we adopt this as it's currently written.
Thank you so much. Councillor Chenworth?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime back in on councillor Gary's point. I agree with the need to have a good parks system, and support you 100% on that. My worry is, we may want that, but how much can be continually afforded by our community? And, you know, always striving for the best is good, but that may not be affordable for those that we're trying to serve. So I, while I want to have the best, and I agree with you, the best is good, I think that it's important to be realistic about what's a right size for our community. I would also say that just because it's more expensive in other communities, it does not follow that we need to catch up. That's exactly the reason why we have a continual pattern of increasing taxation occurring at all levels, is that we have this constant catching-up-to-the-other-cities mentality. And the result is an ever-increasing burden on those who pay the taxes. So I don't find that a compelling argument.
Thank you, councillor, and we'll go back to Michaela.
All right, thank you. Okay, so level of service. So last time you, I heard some questions about using your level-of-service goal, or what I typically refer to as an aspirational level of service in the methodology. So the methodology right now uses your current level of service. We're using the overall acres per thousand people of 10.32 as the basis of defining park need for your future residents. Your aspirational goal overall is 14 per thousand persons. And I think that that's, John, correct me if I'm wrong, eight per thousand people for developed parks, and six per thousand people for linear parks, open space, and natural areas. So in SDCs, we can't charge growth for the value of an existing deficiency. So if you're not currently providing that for your existing population, you can't ask growth to pay for more. In some communities, they'll go so far as to say that if you have an identified deficiency and you're using the aspirational level of service, you can't actually even charge for that type of use at all. I've seen this in methodologies before. So we have to exclude the value of the existing deficiency. And we would also have to identify how the city was, would correct that deficiency using other sources of funding. So how are you going to bring that level of service up for the existing community? And then you can charge in the future for that aspirational level of service goal. So in practice, what that means is that your SDC is basically going to be the same as what I've calculated already. And it may reduce the flexibility in the use of SDC funds as we identify projects that are capacity-increasing but are correcting a deficiency, rather than simply correct capacity-increasing overall. So just a little background on the level-of-service approach that we're using, and why we typically prefer to use the current level of service rather than the level-of-service standard, or the aspirational level of service that you've built into your parks plan. Okay, I'm going to move on to phased implementation. But if there are any questions on the level of service, please let me know. So you, I think the key to phased implementation is that you can adopt a rate that is anywhere below that maximum in the rate study. You cannot adopt rates that are above the maximum, but you can use, you can adopt rates anywhere below that that you want. So I've put together an example of a phased approach here, where it increases over three years to the maximum allowable. So in year one, you'd be at a third of that maximum allowable. Year two, you'd be two-thirds, and by year three, you'd be at 100% of the maximum. So this is a proportionate decrease. I typically recommend that if you're going to do a, you know, you're going to adopt a reduction to your rate, that you keep it proportionate to the types of uses. Of course, you can adopt, so if, for example, you want to incentivize very small developments, you can, of course, adopt reductions that are different for those types of development than others. However, I typically would recommend that if you're going to do that, that you make it very clear that you're adopting that to serve public, broad public purposes, that it's, you know, a goal of this, achieving a goal of the city or some other purpose like that. Otherwise, just adopt a blanket reduction to the rates. I've also included sort of an estimated revenue number here. So how much you'd collect annually based on that reduction. And once again, these estimates are based on population forecasts and employment forecasts. So obviously, how much you actually collect is dependent upon development. But so in year one, you'd collect 1.2 million approximately. And then as you increase, you'd increase up to the 3.7 million in year three. And overall, your cumulative reduction in impact fee revenue with this example phased approach would be about 3.7 million in total, cumulatively over those three years. So there are a lot of options with phased implementation. This is just one example. And I can, you know, answer any questions that you might have. We can put together additional examples if you have another approach that you'd like to see. But this is just one way to think about reducing your rates while also achieving your maximum rates eventually.
Thank you. If you want to keep going, right now there are questions popping up that I see.
I'll keep going, and then if we have any questions, you can come back. Okay, so I think I already started to touch on this. But exemptions are not included in the methodology. They are included in your municipal code. So an exemption is a policy decision to serve public purposes. The trade-off on an exemption, of course, is that it reduces your potential revenues. So I think, for example, right now, your code has the same exemptions for all types of revenue SDCs, except for the affordable housing exemption, which does not apply to parks currently. So if you choose any, to explore any new exemptions, that's going to reduce your potential SDC revenues. But it may serve a purpose that you are trying to achieve as a goal of the city. And so those conversations can happen at any time. They're not built into the methodology. And I believe the city may be, Susan, you can chime in here, but it's, I believe you guys are working on SDCs, your other SDCs as well in the future. So it may be a conversation that is ongoing. All right, and some best practices for updating your SDCs. And we always recommend that you adopt a process for annual inflation adjustments so that the SDCs can keep pace with the inflation in park capital costs over time. You have one of these. You have been using it. Your rate has increased over time. But the last time that you did a true update to this, I believe the methodology actually references 1998 data. So we typically recommend that you review and update your methodology in coinciding with any update to your PROS plan, like we're doing right now. Also, any other types of major park policy or planning changes. If you have, if there are any significant changes in market conditions, that's another good time to review your rates. And then generally, we typically recommend that you just do a review at least every three to five years to ensure that those SDCs remain in alignment with your goals and policies. And then, of course, always include an engagement process to help you determine what the appropriate, you know, adjustment to that methodology is, or the rate is, based on public feedback as needed. And then my last slide, John and Susan already covered this a little bit, but next steps. You'll see the draft PROS plan on April 9. There'll be a process for public feedback. And then we'll finalize the PROS plan and the SDC methodology.
Thank you so much. I see I have councillor Peralta ready on my rights. We'll start there. And council president, councillor Chenworth, I will just naturally call on you as I move down the dais.
Thank you, mayor. First, I just wanted to say to the consulting team and to our parks team, Susan, thank you very much for the thoughtful approach that you've taken to your work. I just wanted to correct a couple of maybe misperceptions or maybe misstatements that I heard tonight. I just want to make sure that people in the community understand that system development charges don't tax the existing tax base. Every dollar that we don't capture through system development charges for something that we want to fund is something that the existing tax base is going to have to fund. So in other words, if we want to keep taxes lower on our existing residents, and yet have higher parks, we need to make sure, or better parks, we need to make sure that we're capturing those costs through new development. And while it is true that system development charges do increase the cost of building, they are not waste or bloat. They reflect an investment into our parks and help offset the impacts of growth into our community that we're not currently capturing. There are things that we could be doing today that we're not in terms of helping to defray the costs and the impacts that these increases will have on developers. I think the smart thing for us to do would be to delay accepting, delay taking payment on the system development charges until the houses transact. So that allows it to be a purely pass-through mechanism. And I would just say, there's a lot of communities that don't want to pay these costs, that choose not to pay these costs. I see people from those communities in our rec center every day. And overall, I think the net effect of such decisions not to invest in a community limits both livability and economic growth. I don't think it should be lost on any of us that, generally speaking, the communities that invest in themselves in this kind of way tend to be the communities that are the most successful, both in terms of achieving a high quality of life and in terms of attracting new businesses, because that's what businesses want. They want a place where they have high livability, good public services, good parks, good schools. And I would say that McMinnville has built its reputation on making those kinds of prudent investments historically. And I think the council has, over a period of probably decades, shied away from that to some extent. And I'm really glad to be working on a body that is willing to address some of these challenges today.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Menke?
I've said it all.
Councillor Gary?
Well said. I agree with everything Sal said. Well put. Also, to the consultant team, the packet of information and the agenda as that sort of mathematical narrative was really fun to read. I appreciated that. It sounded like a joke, but it wasn't. I would just would add, I guess, to Sal's point, in terms of the investment in this plan, is, you know, in the recent survey work we did last summer and fall, polling the community and discussing, asking the community what sort of areas and services they would prioritize, when presented a list of sort of what our services are and asked our citizens to rank those. Far and away, parks, recreation, and culture won out over public safety, maintain and repair over roads, parks, and, or roads, paths, and sideways, and over housing. sideways, and over housing. And, and those were the top five, and parks and rec from our voter, from our citizens were, was the most important thing we need to be investing in and propping up that service. So i- in that vein, this plan, when we see, when this, when this methodology with some more information ties together with that ambitious plan, I think it's going to be something that's going to be super exciting for all of us to get on board with and, and to support. And this is the way we do it, put, put our money where their mouth is.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Payne?
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Chenoweth?
Uh, yeah, a couple of things. First off, I'd just like to say thanks. It's a great presentation. I think you did a good job of following up with the questions that were presented at the previous meeting. So thank you very much to the Park and Rec Director and to the consultants on the work that you have done. I would push back on a couple of things. Number one, my recollection is safety was far and away number one on all of the polling that we've done so far. There was some discussion about whether safety meant, um, you know, fixing things in the parks to make them more safe, or whether safety meant the perception that you're unsafe when you're in the park. And, and I, I could see that potential, uh, being either direction, but my memory is far and away safety was number one. Number two, to Sal's point, I, I don't disagree with anything that you said, with the exception that I think the perception that if we don't choose to spend, um, say $14,000 per 4,000 square foot building, or not spend, but assess $14,000 per square, 4,000 square foot building, or whatever the number ends up being, um, that the difference between whatever we decide and whatever we should, could have gotten is going to necessarily be taken from the taxpayer. I think that's a rather large assumption. Historically, I don't think that's an accurate assumption. I think what ends up happening is not necessarily a, a, a dollar-for-dollar take from the, from the, from the taxpayer, but rather, there might be some leaning of the process of, of how we spend money at the parks. Um, so I, I just don't, I don't see that trade-off working out that way. Um, and, and the other thing I also, well, I'll just leave it there. So beyond that, like I said, I like, I think I like the methodology. Um, I do agree with Counselor Garvin's concern about, about potentially the holistic view of it. Um, and I would not be in favor of going for full dollar value, but I am in favor of looking at a way to increase what we're doing with our parks. I'm not, I'm not naive to the fact that what we have today has, we have shortchanged our park system. So I, I'm not opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go Council President, and then there's a couple more comments, so, and we're, we are at 6:53, just for everyone's awareness. So Council President?
Uh, Counselor Peralta and Counselor Chenoweth captured my comments. Blame those two comments together, and that's where I'm at. Thank you.
All right, we'll put them together, shake them around, throw them back out, and land back on you, Counselor Peralta. Thank you.
No, I have no further comments. Thank you.
No further comments at this time. Okay. Well, thank you. I would just join my voice in the chorus of thanking, thanking you for the presentation, continued work on this. Um, I, I kind of landed on your exemptions and updates page, or your best practices page, if you will, and your plan for SDC methodology updates, review methodology with any update parks, recreation, open space master plan. I'm glad we're, um, I'm glad we're doing that now as we're doing this. The, of course, the other, the other things that, on best practices below that, show that this should have happened many, many, many times over the last 25 years. And if I heard you correctly, the last SDC park, the last SDC parks update rate, excuse me, the last update to the SDC rates for our parks happened in 1999, and if I heard you correctly, it's based on a 1988 methodology. Um, so I'm sorry that we haven't been diligent over the years of, of keeping up on our best practices, but I am glad that now in this time of a major Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan, that we're doing this work in tandem. Um, I did have one question from your first slide, which was that you said you couldn't give, um, rates on higher square footage residences based on your data source. Uh, and, and I just had a question around what, what that meant, or, you know, or if that is kind of sufficient for the council, or if it's even a consideration. Do we, you know, maybe it's not really a consideration. Maybe people are only building 10,000 square foot homes in the country, and that never happens in city limits. It's kind of a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a data question that I don't have an answer to, but I am curious about the data source that doesn't allow us to evaluate larger residential builds.
Sure. So the data we use is essentially connecting the size of building to the average number of people within that size of residence, and we use American Housing Survey data, which is the only source that I've seen that has consistent data to connect these things. Um, so, and unfortunately, it has a lot of detail in the smaller bin ranges, but not anything beyond, so their top bin range is 4,000 and above. Um, and so that's just how they collect that data and produce that data for public usage. Um, I suspect that as, and you see that data, you see the, the differences in the number of persons per household, it starts to sort of drop off, so I, I expect that you might see that those higher bin ranges wouldn't really give you much different results compared to the 4,000, although we just don't have the data to prove that one way or the other.
Okay, well, I don't want to do any data-free analysis here of the situation, so I will thank you, and if there are no other questions or comments at this time, then we will close the work session. Thank you so much for your time. It's 6:57, so we will take a three-minute break and reconvene for the regular council All right, if I can invite everyone to find their seats. Thank you. Um, it is March 12th, 20, are we recording or broadcasting, et cetera? Thank you. It's March 12th, 2024, and I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the McMinnville City Council. Uh, I have asked Counselor Menke to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do you want me to do roll call?
Yeah, after this.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, and a God, indivisible, with all his justness and power.
Thank you so much, and we, I rushed over roll call here, so we will step back in time just a moment. I'll ask our city recorder to take the roll call, please.
Uh, Counselor Gary?
Here.
Counselor Menke?
Here.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Here.
Uh, Counselor Payne?
Present.
Counselor Peralta?
Present.
Council President Garvin?
Here.
And Mayor Dropkin?
Here, thank you. Uh, I know some folks have been dealing with some sickness at home, um, and I know we have counselors that are home battling some sickness, and thank you so much for still being here and your diligence and your service to the city. Um, we are now going to comments from community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you're on Zoom and you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature, and when your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. You may also send a chat directly to the city recorder. Um, when you come up to give public comment, please announce your name and the city you live in for the record, and remember to fill out a public comment card, which needs to be submitted to the city recorder before leaving for the evening. And do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening?
Uh, no one has signed up.
No one has signed up. Would anyone in the audience like to provide public comment this evening? No? Would anyone on Zoom like to provide public comment this evening? Can just give you a moment if there's any of you on Zoom that need a second to find the raise your hand feature? All right. Uh, then we will move into our public hearings. Um, our first public hearing is to consider Resolution Number 2024-10, a resolution adopting a fiscal, a fiscal year 2324 supplemental budget for the Fire District Transition. Does any counselor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this resolution? All right, and then I would call on Jennifer Quayar, our Finance Director, to give a presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to be with you, if virtually. So what, what we've got before us in terms of a public hearing is adding the capacity for the city to be able to reimburse the Fire District revenues that we are collecting still on its behalf. At the time we put together the budget, it wasn't clear that the city would continue to take in both transport revenues from insurance companies and folks like that, or continue to be taking payments from CCOs, Community Care Organizations, or the state of Oregon. So because that does need to still go through the city for a time, we need to, and the revenues are there, this is a net neutral kind of thing, but it does exceed 10% of the original budget in the Fire District Transition Fund where all of this is happening. And so that's why we have a public hearing, so that we can let folks know that we need to make this, you know, fairly significant adjustment, and folks have the opportunity to weigh in on that from a public perspective. So, um, I think that's the basics. Um, I'm happy to take any questions on this.
Thank you so much. Does any counselor have questions of staff at this time? Okay. Um, we'll now begin hearing public testimony. Each person testifying will be allotted three minutes. Uh, has anyone signed up?
No one has signed up.
Okay. Is there anyone in the gallery or on Zoom that would like to testify in this public hearing? Okay, thank you. Um, there's no one on the phone, correct? Okay, great, thanks. Um, well, then that concludes our public, uh, testimony for the evening. Does staff have anything that they would like to add at this time?
Um, I don't. We can, you will be having, though, on your agenda later in the evening, a resolution that will enact this proposed supplemental budget action, so I'll be back with you then.
Thank you. That will be not long from now. Um, any additional council comments or questions? Not seeing any. I will now close the public hearing, and we'll move into advice and information. Uh, we'll start with reports from counselors on committee and board assignments. Um, I'm going to start to my right this evening with Counselor Peralta.
Thank you, Mayor. My report for council of governments was given at the last meeting. Uh, for this report, MCM 11 is partnering with Juliet's House to produce videos for Child Abuse Prevention Month, which takes place in April. MCM 11 is also one of five local nonprofit organizations that was selected to host a Lynnfield Summer Intern through First Federal-sponsored program. Thank you to our, our partners at First Federal. And MCM 11 is hosting a free cinematography workshop on March 23rd at the MCM 11 studio at 825 Northeast Third Street. So, community members who are interested in cinematography and video development are encouraged to attend that workshop on March 23rd at 11 o'clock at the MCM Studios. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counselor Menke?
We met on February 28th. We welcomed our new housing planner, Evan Hippatis. I hope I pronounced that right, and thanked Tom Shower for his many hours of excellent leadership and support, and he'll continue to follow us for a bit. But Evan, I think will be taking over. Affordable housing works from an action plan. We reviewed the plan and chose our top items for the year. The top item was transitional housing under ORS 197.746. This includes provisions enabling transitional housing accommodations on land within the UGB, whether incorporated or unincorporated land. The city has not enacted provisions for certain types of transitional housing that are authorized by this ORS, and Affordable Housing would like to put together a flexible plan for transitional housing model, with a final draft to be forwarded to the Planning Commission. As with Turnkey and any door place, it will have, to have supportive services designed to help each resident and create and execute a personalized plan for achieving. a personalized plan for achieving housing stability. This would have to include regular case management. It would reintegrate the homeless into a stable community environment, which is one of the main reasons we'd like to do this or are interested in it. We would ask landowners to provide insight into what they need to welcome a transitional living site into their land to incorporate into our model. And transitional living sites under this plan would be temporary, up to one to two years, and have low impact on developable land. The landowner would take the land back for their own purposes after the transitional shelters and support kitchen and sanitary modules were removed. We see this as another answer to clearing the streets of RVs, tents and carts, and helping people get into permanent housing. Our second priority this year, or was decided by the group, was to work on, after we solved the transitional housing project thing, is to explore a multiple-unit limited tax exemption program that would be locally enabled and managed, and to explore affordable housing property tax abatement. I can go in on, but I think I've covered enough for the evening. I'm very excited about this. I do have some pliers, which unfortunately, the graphics did not come through terribly well, so I can also send out the graphics, but if you want to pass those down.
Thank you so much. Councillor Geary.
Thank you. Let's see, DEIAC. We will be meeting Thursday. And that will be a meeting and kicking off our consultants' work on the Equity Lens project. So good start to what will be a really cool project that'll come back. And then I think even soon, that'll be in front of this council as a work session to kind of set the stage for what that is and will be. MURAC, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, so maybe Director Richards can pinch-hit for me at that. But the main subject there was the RB Rubber RFQ process. Third Street PAC had no meeting since last. Stormwater Utility Advisory will be meeting tomorrow for several hours to wrap up some recommendations that will be coming back to council as a package. Affordable Housing, you just heard an update. And then looking forward to that joint school board meeting this Monday, 6:30 at the School District HQ. That's it.
Wonderful, thank you. And Councillor Payne.
Landscape Review approved a landscape plan for the Best Western with conditions, and approved a tree removal that had already been done. And then Lipstick meets in two weeks.
Thank you. Councillor Chenoweth.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. And Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Airport Commission, we had a meeting on the 5th last week. Pretty lively meeting, kind of went over draft budget. And there was a desire to look at how to increase revenues, realizing that our fuel flowage rates are fixed through our FBO contract, which runs through '25 or '26. There was a desire by the commission to maybe look at trying to promote our cheaper fuel rates opposed to other nearby airports and potentially networking with Visit McMinnville on that. Granted, some of those airports are outside of the 50 miles, and people stay overnight, as well as just a general desire to try and network with Visit McMinnville on promoting that we do have an airport, and travelers can use that as an area to get here, to enjoy all the great things that Visit McMinnville promotes. We had a airport commissioner that should be in the audience or on Zoom, that I'll refer you to your packet. That's...we're hoping to get appointed tonight formally. We had some great candidates, but I believe this candidate is going to be a fabulous addition to the commission as far as perspective and locally knowledge, and knowledge she brings from other areas that she's lived and served publicly. Visit McMinnville, we had our annual board retreat that was facilitated by Mrs. Cunningham. That went well. The airport actually came up in that meeting as well, organically, and just about how they could potentially help out there and possibilities. So looking to connect Jeff Knapp and our airport administrator, Willie, on seeing what opportunities are there, as well as some destination development conversation, got pretty in-depth in what other communities are doing around the state that potentially could still meet the merit of the ORS that, you know, sets of parameters around the overnight stay and the greater than 50 miles away to utilize the 70% side of that TLT and not the 30% side that goes into our general fund. Lots of interesting ideas around there, and look forward to seeing how that develops over the next 12 months. YCOM, we met today, and relatively brief meeting, just a director's report. Staff over there is going to be getting a little bump in pay to stay competitive. We still are understaffed, as well as other dispatch agencies are understaffed. So just trying to stay competitive and help with retention of the staff that we do have, as well as to attract new talent. And Fire District, really the resolution tonight is more of just a housekeeping of a formality with how ambulance revenues fall and the ARPA ambulance. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have moved the executive session from this evening to next week, so any councillor that hasn't had the opportunity yet to complete the city manager's review has the opportunity to get that in, and that our city manager can have feedback from all members of the body. As noted earlier in your email, you can anticipate the agenda for the joint meeting with the school district either tomorrow or the next day. There's some additional information in there as well. I had the...oh, let's see. EMWAC was canceled this past week. And then, let's see, everything else is pretty great. I had the pleasure of delivering a keynote at Western Oregon University for GSA Days last Friday that was attended by 19 different schools and about 150 kids. And just really always great to be able to get in front of our youth and continue talking about, especially the point I drill home whenever I'm talking to students, is that they need to go to class. Of course, reflective of our chronic 40% absenteeism that we're seeing at our high school, it's important to continue to remind our kids to go to school. We're continuing to meet in Subcommittee on the Northwest Rubber Site, and that is moving forward. I had the pleasure of attending. The tail end of the community home builders launched their new homes in Carlton recently. They have 12 new homes there. And then they're moving into Dayton and Amity for their next projects. They've done projects in McMinnville before. And of course, we look forward to the day when they're building in McMinnville again. We have Planning Commission interviews coming up again this Friday. So it's a half a day, and I thank everybody that's involved in that process. Over the...when the last council meeting was held, I was attending the American Public Power Association Legislative Rally with General Manager John Dietz from McMinnville Water and Light. I would say we had a generally successful trip, meeting with many members of our federal delegation and talking about the many impacts that influence Northwest rate pairs as a whole, but also specifically McMinnville residents. As we prepare for the next quarterly report, as you'll recall from our work with McMinnville Water and Light, our restorative work with McMinnville Water and Light, part of the...one of the outcomes that we got to, one of the products is that we get quarterly reports back and forth between bodies from our head administrators. And so when Mr. Dietz comes here to do his report, he is going to be talking about the very many things that are influencing these rates, why you're not necessarily seeing the same thing happen in McMinnville as maybe, you know, if you're a PGE customer outside of McMinnville, but to make sure that the council understands kind of the whole body of pressures that are facing public power in general and are making these sharp increases happen all around us. While we're talking about our federal government, we are very ecstatic that Congresswoman Salinas and Senators Merkley and Wyden held onto our request through a very long and difficult budget session and successfully carried our Third Street Development ask all the way through. And so indeed, we have been awarded $850,000 for that project, which is great. Yes, and similarly, on great news, House Bill 4134, which is our state representative, Lucetta Elmer's bill, has made it all the way through the short session, and is now waiting for a signature from the governor. I would say 95% of the policy stayed intact. And McMinnville's project stayed in. Four of the 11 cities stayed in the original bill. And I will just say, much to Representative Elmer's credit, that this bill passed the Senate unanimously. And I think that that is a real...something really to celebrate the amount of bipartisan support that followed this bill and then that saw it all the way through is, I think, is a really wonderful thing. We received our letter congratulating us that we are again a Tree City USA, and we'll be having the official proclamation in April. But very proud of us for being a Tree City USA. And so we're happy about that. And then the last piece of good news isn't so much news, but the International City County Management Association did go out of their way to send a thanks to the McMinnville City Council and the city of McMinnville for extending our very, very, very incredible city manager, very adept...I'm not grabbing the right word, but I know that the...I've talked a lot with the folks at ICMA, and they were as grateful for Jeff's leadership of that organization and as proud to have him in that seat as we have been to have him here at the city of McMinnville. So I just wanted to acknowledge your acknowledgement and not just hang this on my wall. So congratulations, Jeff. And with that, sir, we will go to you.
Wait a minute. Is this hot now? I'm not used to having one that turns off. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. A couple of items to report. Human Resources Director Vicky Hedges and I have met to discuss the pending recruitment for the police chief's position. We don't have a calendar put together yet. We're working on a recruitment strategy and building a calendar. I expect that we will likely launch the recruitment late summer or early fall with the goal to have a successor to Chief Scales onboard about the time that Chief Scales finishes his farewell tour, which is well underway, by the way. Second, just note that I'll be giving a quarterly update on a variety of city affairs to the McMinnville Water and Light Commission on the 19th of March. And John Dietz, General Manager, will be here on March 26th to do the same for this body. Thank you.
Thank you. And to our city attorney, David Leitenberg.
Nothing from the legal department tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Muir.
It's going to be a beautiful day down at Joe Dancer this Saturday for the opening of spring soccer. We have our normal crowd of about 700 families that will be down there. And we are also going to be flying a drone to take some pictures of the park at its fullest peak and also relationship to the proposed Miller property for the rec center. So we're really looking forward to Saturday down at Joe Dancer. If anybody wants to come down, it's a great day.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Superintendent Rentschow. All right, thank you. Sir Costa, anything from you?
Is that right now?
We'll go around and come back to you. All right, Mr. Jeff with a G, Hunsaker. So lovely to meet you. Would you like to give us a report? And welcome to the city of McMinnville.
Thank you. Just a real quick one. Leland and David are going to be giving an update on the Public Works Facilities shortly. It's not on?
We give the trick mic out on the first night.
You gotta inhale this thing. Oh, there we go. All right. So Leland and David will be giving a more thorough update on the Public Works Facilities Plan. But I also wanted to mention, on April 9th, the council is going to be hearing about permitting fees and specifically engineering fees. That's coming up. And we are having a development stakeholder meeting tomorrow with developers to kind of introduce that and talk to them and get some of their feedback all morning.
Thank you. City Recorder Claudia Sisneros.
Yes, as Councillor Geary pointed out, on Monday, March 18th, we have a joint work session with the McMinnville School Board. It's at 6:30 at the McMinnville School District Office. And then just our March 20th work session will not be in here, but rather at the Police Department in their training room. And it's a joint meeting with Mack Water and Light, 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock sharp, we'll be there. Thank you. And going to Zoom, Finance Director Jennifer Quayar.
Nothing to report this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Our Airport Manager, Willie Williamson.
Hi. I don't have anything to report either.
Thank you. Community Development Director Heather Richards.
Good evening. I wanted to talk a little bit about an email I sent out to you, which indicated that we are one of 30 cities that have enlisted a severely rent burden in the state of Oregon. We've received several emails from different city councillors asking about that. What that means is that over 25% of our rental households are spending more than 50% of their total household income on housing. We had some questions as to what does that look like in terms of numbers of people and households? We've done some quick calculations. We think it's impacting about 3,600 residents in McMinnville that are living in these households that are severely rent burdened. One of the things...totally about 10 to 11% of our total population. One of the things we need to do is host a public meeting to talk about being severely rent burdened, what it means for us in terms of our demographics, and then potential strategies to reduce the rent burden and try to come off that list. And cities are coming off of it every year, so that's good. Wanted to share with you, we have that scheduled, actually, to have the public meeting in the fall of this year. And the reason for that is we're just about to start our, what's called our Housing Production Strategy work that we need to do and submit to the state by the end of this calendar year. That Housing Production Strategy will be all about our strategies, our actions, our programs and policies to produce affordable and needed housing in our community. So we think by the fall, when we host the public meeting, we'll have more data that we'll be able to present to you, and also potential solutions as well. So Evan Hippas, who's our new Associate Planner for Housing, will be leading us through that work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Leland, you can give that update now.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councillors. So tonight, David and I are here to give you a brief update on where we are with our space planning analysis. Last year, we contracted with Jacobs Engineering to basically walk us through and work with us to evaluate both the Public Works Operations site and the Wastewater Services site to look at where we are with our space and our employees and try and come up with a plan that would work for both our groups and look at either, should we be located in one location? Should we stay where we're at? Should we co-locate in a new location? So a lot of that work has been done. And so Phase 1 of this project has been completed. And to start this process, I'm going to try and see how well I can do it sharing my screen and bring up a presentation. And... There we go. All right. So basically, we got some slides to run through. The first thing, we're going to kind of, David's going to talk about his site and I'm going to talk about my site. Then we'll work through the presentations. So David, if you want to take over.
You bet. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because I'm not very good at this mic thing, but we'll see how we do. First of all, I just want to say I appreciate the opportunity to be part of the discussion. I'm not going to spend a bunch of time talking about the condition of our facility. I think it's a pretty well-known situation. Our facility dates back to the 1970s. There was some improvements done late 1990s, but unfortunately, we just haven't had the resources to keep it up. And it's just tired, right? So part of the discussion here was also to look at the future, right? And how that site could serve us in the future, kind of stepping aside from the conditions. And so what we did is we looked at metrics like staff per acres when it comes to parks, staff per lane mile, center line miles, excuse me, when it comes to streets, staff when it comes to square foot of buildings, facilities, staff to what's called EVUs or equivalent vehicle units and fleet. So these are all metrics that are commonly used to kind of project your workload requirements. And then we aimed 20, 30 years in the future. And it became really clear to me that that site is not going to be able to hold us 20 years from now. As the community grows, our need to provide staff, to provide the critical services we provide, is not going to fit on that site. So that kind of guided me towards my thoughts about co-locating it to Wastewater Services. So in terms of the condition of the building, we use what's called a Facility Condition Index, which is in 2018, the city worked with a consultant to assess all of our facilities. So we have that data and it applies across all of our facilities. Really, it's similar to a pavement condition index. It just creates a metric that allows you to compare conditions at different sites. And when you get in the, the condition index is based on basically the ratio of what your immediate needs, your immediate repairs, your on-fire repairs are to the value of the building. And when you get in that range of, between 10 and 30%, you're in the poor category. Get over 30%, you're in the failed category. And in our situation, at least one of our buildings has passed that lifespan and has failed. And other buildings are kind of perilously close. So it's time to start taking a look. I think one thing I did want to mention is that the process that the consultant followed was really robust and was really pretty interesting. And by robust, I mean it involved more of our staff in a planning project than I think I've ever seen for both, on both Leland's team and my team. And the staff was excellent about engaging. And Jacobs did a terrific job of building a process that allowed them to be part of every design charrette, every conversation. And so I think we've got really excellent buy-in from the staff and they feel part of the process. So that's terrific. I think the other thing, this is kind of an aside, is that I have to really thank Leland for his leadership through this project. He's managed the project and helped us get to where we're at. And he didn't have to do that and didn't have to drag us along, and I really appreciate that. So I'd take any questions y'all might have about our facility, but I think most have been out there. And I think we know that it's an opportunity to put, to serve the community better and honestly, to put our staff in a better position to do that work.
Anything to add, sir?
For the wastewater side of things, fortunately, our facility is a little bit newer than David's, so we don't have some of the building issues, other than our administration building's undersides for the amount of people we have now. And future growth is going to be a problem for us unless we do some work. So we've worked with Jacobs, as David said, and I believe we come up with, we started out with approximately eight different possibilities of placing our facilities in different locations, combining our facilities, and we've got that narrowed down to just four possible alternatives. And with that, so I think if I got this right, we'll start off with, basically, we have our two different locations. And I was hoping to be able to use a pointer, but I don't seem so. So right now, we have our Public Works Operations Site located right next to Water and Light and Dog Park and the old wastewater treatment facility, which was, I think, back in 1951 went online.
No, Leland didn't work there.
I did not work there then. I started just as the new plant came online. So and then we have our facility located out off Clearwater Drive. And those are the two locations that we're presently working from and planning from. Then we have our operations site, which David had led to. We have the operations site. One of the discussion points that came up, we had talked with Water and Light and early on about their needs and their facilities and if there was any possibility of collaborating or working with them. And they are out of room as well, so they didn't have space for us. And our work groups are very different in some aspects, so it didn't make sense. But they had requested of us to possibly expand another 50 feet into the Public Works Operations Site of their switch yard at the substation. So that was one of our first discussions with them, was they wanted to be able to use that 50-foot buffer to be able to increase their substation. So that already kind of put a damper on the operations site and that facility. We also have, in this process, looked at our old treatment facility and how to decommission it, how best to make that land either usable or, and we also approached Water and Light, and they are actually interested in the site, depending on how all this works out. So we have a possibility of how to get rid of at least the wastewater treatment site. And if we decide to move operations elsewhere, they would be very interested in taking over that entire site. That was a very positive discussion we had with them on that. Next up, we have the wastewater treatment facility itself. Presently, we have a lot of land out there that has for future growth of the treatment process. The issue we have is in 92, the county, we are all located out in the county there. So we are under county control. And the land outside the current footprint was approved for wastewater services only. Well, I should say wastewater treatment plant was approved for wastewater services only. So we had 33 acres approximately there that got approved by the county for wastewater services. The rest of the land was zoned EF80, so exclusive farm. And that's been our challenge. And with it outside the urban growth boundary, our Winterbrook group told us we would have a very difficult time of being able to develop that property as it presently sits. So this brought us to some site constraints that we already have. Presently, we have, like I said, the 33 acres that were approved by the county. Of that, we have approximately five and a half acres that are left that are developable. From this chart, it's kind of hard with my pointer here to see, but in the upper left by the treatment process, where my cursor is, we have about 1.5 acres that is set for bio-solids work. We have .9 acres available, that is where the RV dump site is. And then we have the 4.7 acres available where the fire training tower is. That's presently wastewater property that is on a lease to the Fire District. And this other 1.6, my cursor would stay here, 6 acres is designated for future tertiary and sand filter treatment. So our property is limited. Our plans to start with for this discussion, as we get into alternatives in a little bit, was to place operations where the fire training tower is. Wastewater would expand their expansion, their, our current administration building and add some new buildings over where the RV dump site is. And then we may possibly end up having to take over the Police Evidence Building and move them somewhere as well. So there's a lot of problems with our land requirements. And that's when we found out this land right next door to us is possibly coming available. It's inside-city limits. It's already industrial, so it would be perfect for our needs and is perfectly sized for future growth of both our facilities. So that's some of the land use issues we are dealing with and are looking to hopefully move forward on. So to start this process, our alternatives. And David, if you want to kind of?
Sure. Thanks, Leland. So what this slide does is, alternative 1 is addressing Public Works Operations only, separate from Leland's facility. And it basically would rebuild what's there. And one of the first things I'd point out, is you see that black square? It ain't as big as the whole property. And so there are significant constraints. We have constraints between us and Water and Light with the ravine and that wooded area. Then, of course, the old wastewater plant, to make that site buildable, it became pretty obvious pretty early in the study that that would be cost prohibitive. If I remember correctly, it was worth of $10 million just before you built anything. So pretty constrained site. But go on to the next slide, Leland. So this is just a conceptual drawing of how the plant, excuse me, the plant, of the site could lay out. And it has good access. It creates space. But what jumped out to mind for us is number one, is what's this going to look like in 30 years, 40 years? Because we can't expand from there. So certainly a usable space, really more for the next, you know, 10, 15 years, but beyond that, it probably wouldn't meet our needs. So the next alternative is alternative 2. Oh, I'm sorry, Leland. This is just a rendering of the site. And again, just a quick backup, what the consultants did is they walked through all of these layouts with our staff. Our staff was able to make comment on everything from how the buildings were connected, to the vehicle circulation, to where the material bins were located, how the vehicle bays were set up. So quite a lot of initial work's been done. You know, simply things like where do you place bay doors? How do you, you have bays that are, you can enter from both areas. Where do you put loading docks? And that was the advantage of having the staff so heavily involved, because they could see all those things. So alternative 2 is really kind of a, oh, it's still, it's a separate approach. It basically plunks us down in, on wastewater property, but it doesn't create any kind of real connection. It would basically put us on that training site. The facility would be built separately. We would have our own access and our own administration building and kind of a parallel track to what's happening. So why don't you guys show the next slide, Leland? And again, this is just a potential of how this layout could work. If I remember correctly, it would consume much of, if not all, the Fire Department Training Station, which is not the end of the world. That's why I believe the agreement with the Fire Department calls for, the lease can be terminated with a two-year notice. So it's not the end of the world, but it's just something to note. But again, this layout works. It certainly puts us in proximity to wastewater services and could be a good plan moving forward. But what it doesn't do, it doesn't really create that synergy, right? I think one of the things that, and I don't want to overblow this, but I think Leland and I both kind of came to that conclusion, that this was a rare opportunity to really co-locate and create that synergy, because we work so closely together anyway. If you're, if we're communicating with you folks about our response in a winter storm, it's not just my staff. Our staff, our emergency response staff is augmented by Leland's team, and we wouldn't be able to do it without his team. And so having that closeness is really, really critical. We're great, because we have great relationships and great people, but co-locating them is just going to improve that. So then, I think there's, I think that's kind of the end of our stuff, isn't it, Leland?
Yeah. So the next phase was just addressing, so the first two alternatives address public work needs. The third alternative addresses just our needs out at the treatment site and would, basically, we would be converting our existing administration building, would have the shop moved out of it, and that office space would be expanded. We'd build a new maintenance building slash conveyance and storm building that would mainly house a new storm team once, and however that is developed for future. And then the conveyance area would have their current shop. They would build an additional outside storage area. And we would have to talk to the Police Department about how they feel about their Police Evidence Building moving somewhere. And, oops. So and then, of course, a rendering of how that might look. And then the final alternative was more of a joint operations that would work, that would tie both our teams together. So it would take up the fire training space. This would be more of a, conveyance would be out here with storm, along with streets and parks, and they would still have a lot of their area. This would work out into some of our farm space, so there would still be some development issues to work with there. But I would also point out, this site right next to us would make this process 100% better and improve us for the future. So we are very interested in the possibility of being able to acquire that land if that works out for this process. Now, again, this is a very high level. Our next, well, let me not jump ahead of myself. So the very, this high-cost estimate that Jacobs team came up with, basically, I put the, in bold and the black are the median prices of these different groups. So if we chose that operations was going to stay at their current site, they would have an $18 million project. We would then have an $11 million project. So we're looking at a $30 million project if we stayed separate. If operations told Site 2, we would still have to update our site and have alternative 3, so there's 31 million. If we worked together and joined forces, we're talking about a $20 million operation.
Yeah, I think it's interesting, you know, that, as that evolved, it became clear to me that that was, it's clearly the lowest cost alternative. I think what the concept does really well is it puts us in, it looks at the various functions that each of us provide. And so if you, on the alternative, you saw that the storm crew, conveyance crew, street crew, park crew, all of the field crews are in the same place, right? And again, it's that synergistic approach that allows those teams to work together. They do it already, that happens, but this just makes it better. And I was quite surprised and honestly, pretty happy that it was the lowest-cost alternative. So I think that's an important concept to make sure you understand, that this isn't just aimed at building something new. It's about, it's about giving us the best chance to do what we do even better.
And these layouts weren't, they aren't the final outcome of this process. That was conceptual. That was building size, design, setup for the amount of space that we need. If we decide to move sites or do something different, those buildings would plop onto a different location. And alternative 4 could be moved into a different area where Fire Training Tower doesn't have to go away. The Police Evidence Building doesn't have to be moved. So that's some of our hope for the future of some of the work that we're doing. So to tell you where this is going, we want to start Phase 2, which would mean we'd be coming back to you, cost and scope of work from Jacobs, to start Phase 2. And what that would entail is it would allow us to get to a design point that we could then go out and start looking for funding sources and seek grants and whatnot. But that's the next critical step we have to face, along with, of course, land and how that may play out. And it looks like I got a question.
Okay. So are you through your presentation? Okay. Fantastic. Then we will open this up for questions. Council President, I see you've got there. I've got a couple notes as well. Counselor Chenoweth, I see your hand as well. So I'm going to start and then we'll go to Council President. Thank you again. Thank you for the work. Thank you for the collaboration and presenting these four different possibilities or these four perspectives that you demonstrated to us tonight. I think clearly through your presentation, you know, even though throughout the packet, you made sure to highlight that there are any number of ways to go, that your fourth option seems to be the most fiscally responsible, but also, you know, we're not impacting other departments where we don't have price tags attached to those things yet. So the cost for police. for police. Thank you for mentioning earlier on about what our agreement with the fire department is. That was on my questions. And so, again, while we may be able to give notice, is that really the best move forward? And impacting, again, even though it's no longer Department of the City impacting, an important partner of the city, also has its own cost associated with it. My questions are, I have four questions. One, if we go with, if you pursue option four here, does that specifically include, would the option four include the purchasing of the 6.1 acres that are adjacent? And if it, and if so, does that resolve any potential issues with the county? So that's the first question. Two, is there still ongoing discussion about selling the old wastewater treatment plant as a whole? Has that, or has that kind of gone as far as it can?
I think some of those questions are probably for Mr. Towery.
Okay. And then, the last two-part question is, could you sell the, could we sell the additional three, if we no longer needed them, 31.8 acres that are EFU 80? And if not, what are the limitations to that? Or are there other considerations that we need, like, to be taking, to be thinking about, like, safety or adjacency of other type people or machinery or equipment or chemicals or anything like that to, that would prohibit us from moving forward with a sale? Mr. Towery?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll address the first two questions. I think with the Phase Two work that Leland described at the close of his presentation, we would be able to come back to you and talk about what we think the best property alternatives are for you. We've got appraisals on both of the properties in question. We need to do some more due diligence with both the prospective buyer and the prospective seller of those two pieces of property. And while I don't have the, you know, timeline from Leland in terms of when we might get some meaningful information out of the Phase Two work with our consultant team, I would think sometime in the next two to three months, we could be back to the council, initially in an executive session to talk about property acquisition, and then ultimately in public session to take any action that the council wants to take. And I'll let Leland take the last question, although I think I know the answer, but I don't want to pretend to be a wastewater guy tonight.
So, as far as the 31 acres that are outside our facility presently, there are plans for treatment processes that need to go out there, and that's why we don't want to necessarily go in that direction too much. And also, as a future for temperature, either, there are two options for temperature that we will have to address. One is we either put in big cooling towers, or we put in a wetlands that naturally treats the water, and it ends up becoming kind of like what some other facilities have done. There's walking paths, and you have a nice nature area where people can go walk if they want.
All right. Thank you. And then the only question that didn't, or maybe you were saying in terms of selling old wastewater treatment, that also would come back later. Okay, great, thank you. Council President?
Yeah, I was wondering if that 20 million number for option four has any money figured into it for police and what their relocation cost would be for evidence, as well as if it accounts for the property purchase or prospective property purchase at its current CNA number that Jeff mentioned.
I would say probably it does not include the purchase of the land.
Correct.
Right? That's kind of a late blooming development. And I don't know, honestly don't know, Leland, I would doubt it includes relocating the PD.
Yeah, I don't think it included relocating PD, and then they weren't considering the fire district because that's already wastewater land, and they understood that that land could go away at any time. At least the old fire chief had expressed that to me.
One thing I might toss out is that it's potentially possible, and correct me if I'm wrong, Leland, but if we did pick up that acreage, it could be that we don't impact the PD.
Exactly. That is the case.
Does that answer your question, sir?
It does. One clarification would be on the fire district contract, from my recollection. It was put in there as a longer-term lease, and the only way the city could really provide notice would be if we needed to vacate it for TLDM stuff or some sort of state DQ-type permit and not for just capital construction.
I believe Counselor Garvin is right about that language.
Great. Thank you so much. Counselor Chenoweth?
Yeah, I just wonder, and this is maybe naive, but what are the funding options for this process outside of grants?
What are the funding options for this process outside of grants?
For the wastewater side, we have funding available for expansion of our facilities, for the public work side of it, other than grants and however that may function, I am not sure on that side.
You'd be looking, I'm sorry, Jeff. I was something to say, you'd be looking at alternative revenue sources or looking at general fund, street fund, those are the two impact, and you can't look very far in either of those, given the size.
So, that will be part of the due diligence we go through before we bring back a conversation about acquisition or sale of property. There are a couple of other ways to finance this sort of a facility that we haven't done a lot of work on yet. One would be for wastewater to make a capital loan to the other funds for the construction, and those capital loans could be paid over a longer period of time than the sort of operational loans that we've made in previous years. The other option is that the wastewater services fund could essentially be the landlord, the owner of the building, and they could charge them a market rate rent, if you will, for the other occupants that could be the full value of the land, replacement costs, repair, that sort of thing. So a variety of options that we haven't explored yet. I think we need to know a little bit more about what the cost of development might be before we could come back to the council, but that's part of what we talk about in a future conversation for sure.
Do you have a follow-up, Counselor? No? Okay, thank you. And I saw for a moment our finance director had her hand up. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Jeff mentioned it, just that I spoke with a CPA probably a year ago now about whether the wastewater fund could rent to other public works facilities, and it sounds like that is a feasible path forward, so just wanted to make sure that was out on the table as well.
Thank you so much. Other counselors with questions? Counselor Payne?
Other than the administration building at wastewater, are there other buildings on that specific site that should be retrofitted as far as seismic upgrades?
The other buildings on the site are all processed and built to withstand most earthquakes and functions available, so there wouldn't be any retrofit of the other buildings, just mainly the administration building has seismic issues that were pointed out in the 2016 property assessment that was done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay. Well, thank you so much. We appreciate you being here this evening. We're ready to move into our consent agenda. Now, I don't want to pull an item off the agenda entirely, however, I would like to take a moment and allow the newest members of our city team to self-introduce. Mr. Leitner, I know you've been here, we've done some work with us now over the last couple of months, and we learned a little bit about you when you joined. If you have any additional comments or things you'd like to add, share with the community or the council, that would be wonderful.
Thank you, Mayor. It does feel a little fraught to be introducing myself now after five months and for you to be confirming my appointment, but I thank you for that. I still feel very new here after five months, but I am learning a lot. I am, continue to be intrigued by the city of McMinnville, and I look forward to the work that we continue to do.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Hunsaker, if you don't mind introducing yourself to the council and the community.
I tried to do the mic thing correctly this time. Yes, Jeff Hunsaker, the new Public Works Director. If David still feels new, I feel very, very new. So, but I'm loving the work so far. I'm really getting to, getting excited, getting to know the community and all the interesting challenges ahead. And one thing I think I mentioned with Jeff, that it's actually one of your council priorities around facilitating growth in a way that enhances the unique character of the city. I actually love that goal. I think that's a very worthy goal, and you know what this city is and what you want it to continue being, and I'm excited to be a part of that.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. Well, I'm glad we're moving forward with your appointment as well. Counselor, is your hand still up? Counselor Chenoweth, is your hand still up, or did you have something you needed to add before we move forward on the consent agenda? I haven't asked all my consent agenda questions yet, but...
It is a consent agenda statement question, so I was preempting and putting it up there so when he got there, I could do so. Am I not being loud enough? Do I need to be louder?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I couldn't understand what you said.
It is a consent agenda question item or statement item. I was just getting my hand up in the fact that we were heading that direction.
Oh, great. Would any counselor request to have any item removed from the consent agenda and heard at its regular place on the agenda?
So, I don't have a desire to remove an item, but I would like to comment on an item. I am very grateful to see item B on this agenda and what that represents.
Excellent.
That landmark is very, Nick's Italian Cafe is something that is a treasured item for people like me who, that was the very first restaurant I ever ate in McMinnville back in 1982.
Excellent. I am sure that your sentiments are shared throughout the community, certainly shared by me. I grew up literally in that restaurant and spent the majority of my life there, so happy to and look forward to seeing its new version. If no counselor wishes to remove anything from the consent agenda as presented or amended, then I would ask for a motion to approve.
Second. So moved. I thought you beat me. I thought you beat me.
I didn't, second. I have a second from Counselor Peralta and a first from Counselor Manke.
I guess I made it.
And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed say nay. And the consent agenda has passed unanimously. We will now go to resolutions, starting by considering resolution number 2024-10. This is a resolution adopting a fiscal year 2324 supplemental budget for the Fire District Transition Fund. This is what Director Quayre presented on earlier, and Director Quayre, do you have anything to add at this time?
Yes, actually, I do. When, I think Counsel President Garvin mentioned the ARPI ambulance, and so I was not able to include that in the noticing for the public hearing. However, if you would like to, and I, you know, I defer to the city attorney's comfort level on this, we could amend, I believe we could amend the resolution to include adding the budget amendment components necessary to also have the city of McMinnville pay out of its bank account the balance of the ambulance as a, which the plan was that the Fire District was going to do that, and they asked us if we could, and we can as long as we get the appropriations right. So, we could do that this evening, or I could bring it back in a separate amendment at your next meeting.
My gut says to bring it back at a separate meeting so all members of council have a chance to review and understand, but let me also hear the advice of our city attorneys and city manager.
Frankly, I just don't have enough information to weigh in and would request a second for this to be brought back at another meeting so that I could more fully respond to that.
Thank you. That's all I need to hear. Thank you.
Let me know. We'll make sure that this is the case, but I also believe that that subsequent amendment would not necessarily require another public hearing process, simply a resolution or supplemental budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, exactly right. That was the only reason why I suggested it is below the 10% margin and can be passed by resolution alone, so.
Okay, we'll look forward to that coming back. Anything addition?
My apologies on my confusion.
No worries. Nothing to apologize for. Anything else to add considering resolution number 2024-10 before we move forward? From staff? No?
No, I believe I've shared everything that I've got basic, in the basics, but happy to answer any follow-ups if anyone has any.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion? Then I would ask for a motion to approve resolution number 2024-10.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Manke and a second from Counselor Peralta. And we need to poll, no, and I would ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. At Water and Light, we poll for resolutions, and I usually get stuck on the resolutions calling for a motion, not thinking I need to poll the council instead of asking for a vote. So my apologies for my delay there. We'll now consider resolution number 2024-13, a resolution establishing revised sanitary sewer user fees, and repealing resolution 2023-7. We'll return to our wastewater services manager, Mr. Leland Costa, to present. Thank you.
Let me turn that on. So, from the staff report, you will see that we are requesting to increase rates by 3.5%. Last year, we came in and I asked for 3.5%. 2.5 of that is what has been recommended from Deb Galardi through her review of our wastewater plan, and the 1% was for the increase in the franchise fee during that time. And then this go-around, we are again asking for the 2.5% as recommended by Deb, plus 1% for the increase that we are paying Water and Light for our billing services now. While it was a substantial increase to pay for Water and Light's billing increase, if you look at other facilities, I believe, other cities, that fee isn't really that much in comparison. It was large for what we were paying, but is in line with what that service costs. So, we are looking to do that 3.5%, and then the following years will be 2.5%. We have Deb Galardi on board with our master plan work that we are presently undertaking to look at what our future may be and to make sure that these rates are correct going forward. So, once we get completed with our master plan, which is tentatively scheduled for mid-spring next year, I believe, we will then be back with a new wastewater master plan and capital investment plan to look at and approve. So with that, I recommend that we approve, that you approve resolution 2024-13 and repeal resolution 2023-27.
Thank you. And I'll look for council discussion at this time?
It seems very reasonable considering we haven't assessed anything like that for several years, so.
Thank you. Any additional council discussion? Counselor Chenoweth?
Yeah, I'm just curious, what's the current wastewater fund balance?
Roughly, I believe we're around 40 million.
And to completely rebuild the, or bring us up to where we need to be on our existing structures, we're currently looking at a combined cost of $20 million plus whatever the six acres ends up costing us?
Correct.
I'm trying to understand why we need an increase if we... I'm trying to understand why we need an increase if we have, and maybe somebody that can talk to me about what the, going forward, expected more costs, if, if, if we have twice what we need essentially currently in our account, and that would, and saying twice what we need, that's including a pretty extensive rebuild. Why the need to increase now?
So with our current rate structure, it also is taking into account, we're presently having an $18 million construction project going on, so there's 18 million that's coming out of that 40. We have still more projects in line for INI work, screening projects at our raw sewage diversion structure, which is another 2 million, well, $2 million a year for INI work. It's going to be anywhere from 4 million to 6 million for the screening structure work, and with the expansion of our urban growth boundary and new requirements of our MPDS permit that, we had a discussion with DEQ about this last Monday, I think our rates are probably going to continue to increase to manage all those projects coming down the line.
Okay, so the answer to the question is there are a lot more projects that need to be accomplished outside of just the, the proposed infrastructure that we're talking about earlier in the meeting?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional council discussion? I would look for a motion to approve resolution number 2024-13.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Peralta and a second from Counselor Geary. Any additional council discussion?
I'm curious if there's been any other alternatives discussed to 3.5%. It's just happy increase, and it's just lots of, lots of money going to stakeholders between the city service, you know, being charged to stakeholders, the city services fee, the Fire District, and now this. And I understand that every department has needs and that no city can operate in the red, but there's just been a lot of increases. So I, I'm curious if there's been other, maybe a smaller fee increase?
Well, historic, you might, you might want to mention that these rates were frozen for a few years in your response, yeah?
Yes. Basically, from 2019 to 2023, we froze our rates because of COVID. Our costs skyrocketed through that period because of availability of items, and we are, basically, we are dropping our fund each year because our costs are going up faster than what our income is coming in. And Jeff?
City manager?
Yeah, thanks. Just also note for the, for the record that our, our model for capital improvements includes collecting those funds through the rate payers and, and reserving those funds for the time when the capital projects come due. The alternative to that is to borrow money through revenue bonds or some other tool, which, over the life of a $20 million project, could generate another $20 million in interest rates for the users. So, so if we, if we changed our financing model to only pay for our operations and we started using a debt model to fund for our capital needs, we would see larger increases to support those capital bonds than we currently see in the, in the, in the pay-as-you-go model that we've had in place since, is it about 2009, Leland?
Correct.
We made that transition? Thank you.
Thank you. Additional council discussion? Counselor Peralta?
Wasn't going to say anything, but I guess I will. I, I would just say that, you know, based on Leland's comments and other, and Manager Towery's comments, that I, I just have concerns that sometimes we try and lower costs in a way that is penny-wise and pound-foolish, and I don't think that it makes sense to switch to a debt model to fund these projects when that would significantly increase the overall cost to our taxpayers.
Thank you. Any additional council discussion? All right, Council President?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, remind counselors that we, we have great rates for wastewater and great infrastructure because we've had the, our predecessors have had the forethought to, you know, carry a great fund balance and not be going out and funding these projects through debt like other jurisdictions have in the county, and so that's why our, our citizens and constituents can have great water, sewer, and power rates because of the methodology that our predecessors have had to, you know, pay as we go instead of trying to fund it through debt and be paying those interest rates and have that volatility in our rate structure. And as Deb's briefed us over the years, you know, there's years that a, a rate increase might not make as much sense, but if you keep an even-killed 3% to 4% approach, it, it offsets the need to have those 8% to 10% years and then not have a 0% year. So I think it's easier for citizens and stakeholders to budget for a consistent and level approach across the board than have peaks and valleys of high rates when a project pops up. As long as we can keep these in the lower single digits, I'm supportive of making sure we have great infrastructure.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for the great discussion. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, and those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And the resolution has passed five to one, and we'll now consider resolution number 2024-14, a resolution appointing a member to the city's airport commission, and I will again call on our airport manager, Willie Williamson, to present.
Good evening, council members. This has taken a little bit longer than normal to, to select a airport commissioner to put forward for your appointment. Reason was, was we just weren't receiving any applicants. We finally received four really good applicants, and the standard process was used with a three-person panel for interviewing, and we selected what, what we feel is going to be the, the best person for all things considered for the airport commission. The person that we, we have selected has got a vast amount of municipal and, and business and government experience, and, yeah, I, I think she will bring an awful lot to the, the airport commission as we go forward. I don't have much else to say. Just really happy we, we've got a new commissioner that we're putting forward.
Thank you. And I believe we have, so why don't we take a vote on this new commissioner, and then I believe we have the new commissioner on the call, and perhaps, if you don't mind, staying on for one moment after the, after we, after we take the vote, I appreciate it. Is there any council discussion at this point? I would then ask for a motion to approve resolution number 2024-14.
So moved.
I have a motion from Council President and a second from Counselor Manke. Any additional council discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously, and so we can now unveil our newest airport commissioner, who, of course, is in your packet, if you didn't, but in case you hadn't seen, we have Patty Herzog from MEDP has just been appointed to McMinnville Airport Commission, unless I read my packet incorrectly. That would be embarrassing. And so we would like to, to thank you, and thank you for being here and for all of your work with the city of McMinnville, and I saw you were on the line. I don't know if you're, if you still are and would like to say a few words?
Yes, Mayor, council, thank you so much for your vote of confidence, and I really look forward to serving the community of McMinnville on the airport commission and working with Willie and the rest of the, the city to really maximize this incredible asset for our community. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here and for staying with us through the meeting. I know you attend a lot of our meetings, but if you were here tonight for this specific item, we appreciate you hanging on to the end, and I will adjourn the council meeting at 8:20 PM.